Of abundance and unto new Texas. Let us pray. Thank you, Father, for the power in your words to instruct and transform lives. As we go into our study tonight, we ask that you give us wisdom and insight into your word. Open our ears and the eyes of our understanding. Speak to us, Holy Spirit, and teach us. Help us to apply the principles in your words to our daily lives. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Today, we're looking at Act Chapter Ten. The conversion of Cornelius. Act Ten. The conversion of Cornelius. And I'm starting to read from Acts Chapter Ten, the third eight verses. The third eight verses. There was a certain man in Cisera called Cornelius, a centurion of what was called the Italian regiment. A devout man, a one who feared God with all his household, who gave arms generously to the people and prayed to God always. About the ninth hour of the day, he saw clearly in a vision an angel of God coming in and saying to him, Cornelius. And when he observed him, he was afraid and said, what is it, Lord? So he said to him, your prayers and your arms have come up for a memorial before God. Now send men to Joppa and send for Simon, whose surname is Peter. He's lodging with Simon at Tana, whose house is by the sea. He will tell you what you must do. And when the angel who spoke to him had departed, Cornelius called two of his household servants and a devout soldier from among those who waited on him continually. So when he had explained all these things to them, he sent them to Joppa. In Acts One Eight, Act One Eight, Jesus commanded his disciples to take the gospel from Jerusalem to Judea, Samaria, and to the ends of the earth. With the persecution of believers in Jerusalem, believers were all captured throughout the regions of Judea and Samaria. Already saw the chief persecutor had himself been converted and was preaching trashed. Now the gospel was to be preached to the Gentiles. In Acts Ten, which we are about to study, we're going to see how the gospel was preached to and received by unsupervised Gentiles. In this chapter, we're introduced to Cornelius, a Gentile, a centurion, a loyal official of the Roman army, who lived in Cisera. Even though the Romans were oppressors of the Jewish nation, Act Ten Two describes this man as a devout man and one who feared God with all his household. The fact that he is described as a devout man means that he believed in the God of Israel, the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, and was committed to him. He feared him and reverenced him, even though he did not subject himself to the laws of the Jews. He was a man of prayer, humble and general. He gave arms to the poor. He had a relationship with God, but he was still a Gentile. And the Jews had no dealing with the Gentiles because they were considered unclean. They would not eat with them. They would not enter their houses so that they would not be defiled. As Cornelius was praying in the afternoon, the ninth hour is three P M. He had a vision in which he saw an angel of God. The angel called him by name Cornelius, and he was afraid. In the scripture, people are often terrified when they see an angel. An example is when Zachariah saw the angel who came to announce the birth of John. The Bible says, and when Zachariah saw him, he was troubled, and fear fell upon him. Luke One Twelve, Luke One Twelve. Also, when Mary saw the angel that announced the birth of Jesus to her, the Bible says she was troubled. Luke One Twenty Nine, Luke One Twenty Nine. The reason they were terrified is because the angels are sacred beings who live in the presence of God and do his will. They act as his messengers and only appear to people in extraordinary circumstances. Cornelius saw the angel and was afraid. What is it, Lord? He asked. The angel answered, your prayers and your arms have come up for a memorial before God. God is always aware of our prayers, is aware of all we do, and will reward us accordingly. God is not a debtor. The angel continued, now send men to Joppa and send for Simon, whose surname is Peter. He's lodging with Simon at Tana, whose house is by the sea. He will tell you what you must do. Excuse me. As soon as the angel had departed, Cornelius acted promptly. His desire was to plead God. He obeyed God's instructions. He called two of his servants and a devout soldier from among his people and explained things to them and sent them to Joppa to bring Peter. Now let's continue to read verse nine. We're going to read verses nine to sixteen. The next day, as they went on their journey and drew near the city, Peter went up on the house stop to pray about the sixth hour. Then he became very hungry and wanted to eat. But while they made ready, he fell into a trance and saw heaven opened and an object like a gray sheet bound at the four corners descending to him and let them to the earth. In it were all kinds of four-footed animals of the earth, wild beasts, creeping things, and birds of the air. And a voice, a voice came to him, rise, Peter, kill and eat. But Peter said, not so, Lord, for I have never eaten anything common or unclean. And a voice spoke to him again the second time. What God has cleansed, you must not call common. This was done three times, and the object was taken up into heaven again. Meanwhile, Peter was preparing, God was preparing Peter for those who were sent to him. The next day, when he went up to the house stop to pray at noon, he became hungry. And while the food was being prepared, he fell into a trance. Heaven opened, and a large sheet was let down in which there were all kinds of four-footed animals, wild beasts, creeping things, and birds of the air. Then he had a voice telling him to rise, kill, and eat. Peter answered, not so, Lord, for I have never eaten anything common or unclean. Then a voice spoke to him, what God has cleansed, you must not call unclean. This was done three times, and the sheet was taken up to heaven again. Peter was telling God that as a Jew, he was forbidden to eat unclean animals. Peter had been thinking that the vision was all about food, but he was soon to understand that the vision had nothing to do with food. God had a greater message for him. He was telling him that it was no longer to call the Gentiles unclean, that the gospel must be preached to the Gentiles. Talking about clean and unclean food. Leviticus eleven, three reads, among the animals, whatever divides the hoof, having cloven hooves and chewing the cud that you may eat. N R T puts it this way. The animals you may use of food include those that have completely divided hooves and chewed the cud. Animals partially digest their food. Animals that chew the cud are those animals that partially digest their food and then we go detect it from their stomach. Act Ten Fourteen, Act Ten Fourteen, Peter says, not so, Lord. Something is wrong with Peter's answer. If someone is your lord, you can't say no to him. That is, if it's truly your lord and master. But this is what is evident even in our own actions. Even though we don't realize it, we say Jesus is our lord and master, and yet we argue with him. We don't want to do what he says. Jesus himself said, but why do you call me Lord, Lord, and not do the things which I say? Luke Six Forty Six, Luke Six Forty Six. We should never say no to our Lord's command. Our answer should always be, yes, Lord. Let's continue our reading. We will read from verse seventeen to verse twenty-three. Verse seventeen. Now when Peter wondered within himself what this vision which he had seen meant, behold, the men who had been sent from Cornelius had made inquiry for Simon's house and stood before the gate. And they called and asked whether Simon, whose surname was Peter, was lodging there. While Peter thought about the vision, the spirit said to him, behold, three men are seeking you. Arrive, therefore. Go down and go with them, doubting nothing, for I have sent them. Then Peter went down to the men who had been sent to him from Cornelius and said, yes, I am he whom you seek. For what reason have you come? And they said, Cornelius, the centurion, a just man, one who fears God and has a good reputation among all the nations of the Jews, was evilly instructed by a holy angel to summon you to his house and to hear words from you. Then he invited them in and lodged them. On the next day, Peter went away with them, and some brethren from Joppa accompanied him. Excuse me. While Peter was still wondering what the vision that he saw would mean, the men Cornelius sent to him were standing at his gate. And the Holy Spirit said to him, behold, three men are seeking you. Arrive, therefore. Go down with them, doubting nothing, for I have sent them. Peter went to meet them and asked them what the purpose of their visit was. They delivered Cornelius' message to him. I would like to draw your attention to how they described their master. They showed their own opinion about him. They said, Cornelius, the centurion, a just man who fears God and has a good reputation among the nation of all of the Jews. Cornelius was no doubt highly respected by the Jews. We read about another centurion whom the Jews held in high regard in Luke Chapter Seven. Luke Chapter Seven. The centurion sent elders of the Jews to Jesus to plead with him to come and heal his servant. Verse four says, and when they came to Jesus, they begged him earnestly, saying that the one for whom he should do this, that is the centurion, was deserving, for he loves our nation and has built us a sinner above. Luke Seven, four to five. Like Cornelius, even though he was a Roman official, he was a good and God-fearing man who loved the Jewish nation. Cornelius loved God, and he loved the Jews. I wonder how many, how people would describe you and me. Paul admonishes us, quote, so let us not be tired of doing what is good. At just the right time, we will reap a harvest of blessing if we don't give up. Galatians six, nine. Galatians six, nine. After the messenger had delivered Cornelius' message to Peter, he invited them in and lodged them, two non-Jew servants and a Roman soldier. He entertained them, even though he was a Jew, and they were Gentiles. The world of prejudice in Peter's mind was beginning to crumble. Let's continue from verse twenty-four to verse thirty-three. Twenty-four to verse thirty-three. And the following day they entered Cisera. Now Cornelius was waiting for them, and had called together his relatives and close friends. And Peter, as Peter was coming in, Cornelius met him and fell down at his feet and worshipped him. But Peter lifted him up, saying, stand up. I myself am also a man. And as he talked with him, he went in and found many who had come together. Then he said to them, you know how unlawful it is for a Jewish man to keep company with or go to one of another nation? But God has shown me that I should not call any man common or unclean. Therefore I came without objection. As soon as I was thankful, I asked them, for what reason have you sent for me? So Cornelius said, four days ago I was fasting until this hour, and at the ninth hour I prayed in my house. And behold, a man stood before me in bright clothing and said, Cornelius, your prayer has been heard, and your arms are remembered in the sight of God. Send therefore to Joppa, and for Simon here, whose surname is Peter, is lodging in the house of Simon at Tana by the sea. When he comes, he will speak to you. So I sent to you immediately, and I've done well, and you have done well to come. Now therefore, we are all present before God to hear all the things commanded you by God. The next day Peter went with them to Cisera as the Holy Spirit had instructed him. Cornelius was waiting for him together with his relatives and friends. He was going to give them the opportunity to hear the good news Peter had for them. As Peter was coming in, Cornelius met him and fell down at his feet and worshipped him. But Peter was not going to accept the worship of another man. He lifted him up, saying, stand up. I myself am also a man. God is the only one who deserves to be worshipped because he alone is God. The first and second commandments make this clear. Quote, you shall have no other gods before me. You shall not bow down to them, nor serve them, for I, the lord your God, am a jealous God. Exodus Twenty Three to Four. Exodus Twenty Three to Four. It is amazing how people elevate men of God to the point of worshiping them these days. Such men should take a cue from Peter and discourage people from doing so. All honor belongs to God and to no one else. Peter started by reminding Cornelius of how unlawful it was for him, being a Jew, to keep company with Gentiles, but added that God had overruled that by telling him not to call any man unclean. Why have you sent for me? He asked Cornelius. And Cornelius recounted his vision and how the angel had told him to send for Peter, who would speak to him. Now therefore, we are all present before God, he said, to hear the things commanded you by God. And let's read the remaining verses, beginning from verse thirty-four. Verse Thirty Four to Forty Eight. Then Peter opened his mouth and said, in truth I perceive that God shows no partiality, but in every nation whoever fears him and works righteousness is accepted by him. The word which God sent to the children of Israel, preaching peace through Jesus Christ, he is lord of all. That word you know, which was proclaimed throughout all Judea and began from Galilee after the baptism which John preached. How God anointed Jesus of Nazareth with the Holy Spirit and with power, who went about doing good and healing all who were oppressed by the devil, for God was with him. And we are witnesses of all things that he did, both in the land of the Jews and in Jerusalem, whom they killed by hanging on a tree. Him God raised up on the third day and showed him openly, not to all people, but to witnesses, children before God, even to us who ate and drank with him after he rose from the dead. And he commanded us to preach to the people and to testify that it is he who was ordained by God to be judge of the living and the dead. To him all the prophets witnessed that through his name whoever believes in him will receive remission of sins. While Peter was still speaking these words, the Holy Spirit fell upon those who, all those who heard the word and those of the circumcision who believed were astonished, as many as came with Peter, because the gift of the Holy Spirit had been poured out on the Gentiles. For they heard them speak with tongues and magnify God. Then Peter answered, can anyone forbid water that these should not be baptized who have received the Holy Spirit, just as we have? And he commanded them to be baptized in the name of the Lord. Then they asked him to stay a few days. Peter started his sermon with the following words. In truth, I perceive that God shows no partiality, but in every nation whoever fears him and works righteousness is accepted by him, verses thirty-four to thirty-five. This prayer of the gospel began in Jerusalem with the Jews being the first set of believers. And because of the Jewish-Gentile conflict, they were not eager to reach out to the Gentiles with the good news, for to do so would be scandalous. But God told Peter to take the good news to Cornelius, a Roman. And Peter, in spite of his Jewish background and prejudices, obeyed. And here he was, ready to preach the gospel to him and his household and friends. In every nation, everyone is welcome into the kingdom of God as long as they fear him and is of right standing with him. There is no place for idolatry or prejudice in the church of God. There, Jesus is lord of all and the judge of the living and the dead. Peter's sermon was brief. He spoke about the ministry of Jesus, his death, his crucifix, his death by crucifixion, his resurrection and his post-resurrection appearances, and how he had commissioned them to go to all people so that whoever believes in him will receive the forgiveness of their sins and be saved. While Peter was speaking, the Holy Spirit fell upon those who heard his words. The Jewish believers who were with Peter were surprised that God poured upon the Gentiles the gift of the Holy Spirit with the evidence of speaking in tongues, in tongues, just as he had done for their apostles on the day of Pentecost. The manifestation of the Holy Spirit proved to the Jews that the Gentiles could be saved too. So Peter commanded them to be baptized in the name of the Lord. Then Cornelius asked them to stay with them a few days. A few lessons that we can learn from the chapter. One, the gospel message is for everyone. No one is beyond reach. No one has the right to pick and choose those to whom the good news of Christ should be preached. Two, no matter how different people are from us, we should realize that everybody needs Jesus. God wants everyone to be saved. Whoever calls on the name of the law shall be saved, Philippians ten thirteen. Therefore, we should not allow any barrier, race, language, culture, all our prejudices to keep us from telling other people about Christ. Peter was a Jew, while Cornelius was a Gentile. Nevertheless, God's plan of salvation included both of them, which was why they arranged for that meeting between the two of them. Three, many people still need to hear the gospel message, and people are needed to take it to them. We must be ready to show others, no matter who they are, the way just as we ourselves have been led to Jesus. just as we ourselves have been led to Jesus. Romans ten fourteen to fifteen, Romans ten fourteen to fifteen says, how then shall they call on him in whom they have not believed? And how shall they believe in him of whom they have not heard? And how shall they hear without a preacher? And how shall they preach unless they are sent? As it is written, how beautiful are the feet of those who preach the gospel of peace, who bring glad tidings of good things. It is important that you and I make evangelism our priority. Let nothing stop us from carrying out Christ's great commission in Mark sixteen fifteen, Mark sixteen fifteen, especially since Christ has broken down every wall of partition. His commission is go into all the world and preach the gospel to every preacher. Mark sixteen fifteen. Let us pray. My Father in heaven, we thank you for our study of tonight. Thank you that your plan of salvation includes everybody, no matter their race, language, or culture. Help us to know that there is no place for bigotry or prejudices in the church of God, as God wants everyone to be reached and saved. I pray that our differences from other people will not stop us from sharing the good news with them, as everybody needs Jesus. Help us to do the work of evangelism and so fulfill our Lord's command. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Join us next time as we continue our study of the Acts of Apostles with chapter eleven. Peter explains why he took the gospel to the Gentiles. Good night.